And I didn't do anything to open it. This is mine. I might need a new one sooner than I thought.
I don't have it.
I believe so.
I don't mind. Just point me in the right direction.
Bring it down here.
Do you have an extra pen down there?
All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is May 1st, 2025, public hearing for the Orange County School Board. And maybe we have roll call, Ms. Byram.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Anderson. Ms. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Nothing?
No, ma'am.
All right. So I'm seeking a motion, agenda approval?
Move to approve as presented.
Second that.
All right. So motion carries. And we are down to item 2A, which is the public hearing. If I might mention before we get started, Mrs. Anderson, I talked to her this morning and got her permission to share with you that she is not here tonight because she had a death in her family this morning. So she is in Pennsylvania, but is joining us virtually if she's there. Welcome, Mrs. Anderson, and your inner, our thoughts and prayers. And then we also have two of the candidates who are joining us virtually. Mrs. Tina Whittington and Ms. Janelle Cooper are with us virtually. And then Mr. O'Brien Martin is here in person. So we're going to start this part of the meeting by having each of them give you a three- to five-minute spiel about their, their application to join us on this board. So, Mr. Martin, should we start with you since you're in the room?
Sure.
All right. I guess at the podium where you have a microphone would be the best.
Thank you. Well, hello, everyone, to everyone here in person and everyone here virtually, of course, the board members as well. My name is O'Brien Martin. I'm very happy to be here with you all today. Currently running for District 4 seat in the vacancy as well as in the general election in November. And a little bit for while I'm here, you know, for as long as I remember, I've been your neighbor. And now I'm asking to be your advocate. As a proud alumni of our school district and a business owner right here in Orange, I have a vested interest in the, in the success of our schools and communities. I believe in the power of our community. Our schools are more than just buildings. They're the heartbeat of our neighborhoods. I believe that when our student succeeds, our families succeed. When our families succeed, our community grows stronger. I believe in the promise of every single Orange County student. And I believe it's our duty as a school district to prepare them, not just to graduate, but to thrive. And whether their path leads them to college, career, military service, or elsewhere, we must make sure they're the most competitive from a college and career landscape. Because every single student deserves to walk across that graduation stage with more than just diploma, with more than just an option, but they deserve opportunity. I believe that students matter. And those two words aren't just our campaign slogan, but they're a commitment. They're a commitment to every single child walking into a classroom with big dreams. A commitment to every parent hoping for a brighter future. A commitment to every single teacher pouring their heart into their students every single day. When we say students matter, we mean it with every fiber of our being. It's the reason I'm staying in front of you today. As your next District 4 representative, I will ensure that we're, we are investing into our students by doubling down on CTE and workplace certifications so that we can ensure that, yes, the Orange County student is the most competitive from a college and career landscape. As your next District 4 representative, we will empower and support our teachers and district personnel. Because when Orange County Public Schools becomes the best place to work, it becomes the best place to learn. As your next District 4 representative, we as a community return the page on divisive politics and get back to what's important, advancing the lives of Orange County students, teachers, and families. To members of the board and our community here today, that is the reason why I'm running. And I look forward to having a larger conversation with you as, as we progress. Thank you.
Are we okay online now?
Yes, ma'am. I believe we are.
Okay. So how about Ms. Cooper? Ms. Cooper, can you hear us?
Hello. I'm just waiting to walk through the door from work. I don't have anything much prepared. Just that I, what I want to accomplish is to be an advocate for the students and the teachers and to make, to make decisions for our students so they have a competitive edge within our, when they, when they graduate and to move forward and be successful. And also to provide safety, you know, to provide safety within our school. Sorry, I didn't have anything much prepared. I'm kind of frazzled right now. But that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. We appreciate it. And Mrs. Whittington?
Thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate this public hearing. As a nice new resident of Orange County, I've had four children who've gone through the Orange County Public School system. I have a daughter-in-law who teaches at Lucas Grove Elementary, third graders, which is really fun. And a grandchild on the way who's probably likely going to join my children in learning at Orange County Public Schools. So I just feel like I'm deeply invested in the quality of education our children receive. And believe my background in executive level management makes me well-suited to contribute to the board's decision-making process. I have 14-plus years in executive nonprofit management, which has equipped me with strong skills in problem-solving, strategic planning, fiscal management, communication, working in coalition, board management, managing conflict constructively in human resources. Currently, I directly manage a $22 million budget. And I manage a team of directors who together manage 100 full-time employees. So I would like to take all the things that I've learned and these skills to effectively contribute to your board's work, including reviewing the budgets, helping develop policy, effectively communicating with educators, parents, and community members. And I really want to work collaboratively with the board, the superintendent, and the broader community to create a positive and supportive learning environment for all students. My hope is really to see OCPS continue to invest in our students' academic success through top-notch educational programs, including vocational programs, creating safe and stable learning environments and amazing extracurricular activities, which my kids all got to enjoy, a lot of different things from robotics to junior ROTC to drama, to going to Italy with the choir, things that I felt like were so enriching for my kids. I just want to see that continue to grow and develop so that we can broaden their experiences and also create ownership in the broader community in which they live. I am pleased that my son went away to school, to Shenandoah University, then Virginia Tech, and is now here back in Orange County living. And his wife is working here. And I just want to see that replicated across families where they come in, get a great education, and just feel connected here to the community. We give them the skills they need to go out and learn or go strike into the workforce and continue to invest right back here in Orange County.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Whittington. We have public comment tonight. Laura, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have three speakers signed up tonight. The first speaker is Sarah Jaeger.
Good evening, board. It feels as though you're trying to rush a District 4 appointment through. Why is that? A temporarily appointed candidate will have little time to be a productive member of this board with summer quickly approaching. It's my understanding that this District 4 seat does not need to be filled at all before the November election, but this board is pushing for action in what appears to be a very politically motivated move so that one side or the other can push forward their preferred agenda or give a candidate in the fall election a hand up in their campaign. Right now, with a four-member board, it's a wonderful opportunity for you to show Orange County that you can work together to come to consensus on the important issues that best support our educators, administrators, and students. I quote information that was shared publicly on social media stating, "We need a Republican candidate for school board. He or she will be competing against a 20-year-old white male liberal with no experience." Does Mr. Martin's here? "Mere identity define his political beliefs? All I've seen him shares that he's a recent alumni with extensive leadership experience for his young age. He wants to give back to his community and the youth with whom he connects." After personally talking with Ms. Cooper, she sounds like a concerned parent that wants what's best for public education rather than political agendas. Whereas Ms. Whittington works for a pro-life, extremely politically biased organization, she openly admitted she heard about the open seat at an Orange County Republican Committee meeting and has posted articles on her personal page discussing gender identity and preferred pronouns as a mental disease. This certainly sounds like distracting political rhetoric that would influence her decisions on the school board, thus distracting from policies that will actually now support the education of our children. I ask this board to please set aside politics at least until November when the District 4 residents can vote themselves for their next school board representative. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tracy Loughlin.
I just want to repeat my request from the last meeting, and I'm sorry for sounding like a broken record. But I'd like to encourage the board, as you embark on filling the vacant seat and conducting a self-evaluation, to use the lens of minimizing political interference and personal political views in the work of the board going forward. We've seen the harm and the cost that brings to the district. I urge you instead to prioritize how best to support teachers and students with a focus on teaching and learning, nothing else. Thank you.
And the final speaker is Larry Scott.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Horneck, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm here to voice my support for Ms. Whittington tonight. If we do have to appoint someone, and it's unfortunate Ms. Anderson's found herself in the situation she's in tonight, and my prayers are with her. By my understanding, I think it has to be done Friday. But you're the board, you can probably vote to extend that or something until Ms. Anderson, our chair gets back perhaps. My argument with respect for the gentleman to my right here, he seems very enthusiastic and very well-spoken, presents himself well. The District 4 voters voted for Ms. Quinton, and the outcome was a landslide. And we are technically still in her term. Unfortunately for her, she had to drop out of this, of her board seat because of circumstances at home. And my heart goes out to her, and our prayers are with her family. But I think Ms. Whittington mostly represents, not that we're looking for a clone for Ms. Quinton. Speaking with Ms. Whittington even today, she is her own person. She has her own beliefs and her own ideas. And she seems to have the fortitude to go forward and for District 4. And as I was saying, if we must appoint someone to, in the meantime, before the election, I think to appoint someone who mostly aligns with our values that we put in that office by a landslide would be the best decision. So my support is for Ms. Whittington. Thank you.
All right. That concludes the public comment portion.
Sorry. I had emailed you about 10:20 this morning to speak. Ryan Soon.
You okay with it?
I don't recall getting an email from you this morning, but if the board is...
Does it matter to you? Okay. Mr. Soon, I think you're, go ahead.
I don't see it, Mr. Soon, so, sorry about that.
Well, I do, but I was in a hotel in New Orleans this morning, so it may have not gone through.
And you came back to Orange.
Just for this. No, good evening, board members, citizens. My name is Ryan Soon. I am a resident of District 4, and I'm a father of two children that are currently attending Orange County Public Schools. I, for one, am thankful that you guys are holding this and not dragging any feet, having somebody to replace our District 4 representative, because we should not be without a voice. So I appreciate your efforts in that. One of the things I do want to do is thank all of the candidates for coming forward and expressing interest to represent our district as well as represent our voices. Public service is never an easy thing, and I appreciate you folks all stepping up. One thing I do want to do, though, is I want to express my support for Tina Whittington. I was looking at the, the online resumes, reading what I could about each of the candidates. And she has my full support for two main reasons. The first being experience, just looking at the resumes. This is a very important role. Our children are very important to all of us. And the experience that she has compared to the other candidates is just far superior. And what we need to do is have and leverage that experience instead of rely on using, using this position to gain experience. The second reason, I'm going to echo the gentleman that just went before me. We elected Chelsea in 2021 by an overwhelming majority vote. It is only the right thing to do in an interim position to fill that with the voice of the people that voted. And that is Ms. Whittington. Thank you.
Did we leave out anyone else inadvertently? All right. So then, public comment is now closed. And we will move on to number 3A, board member comments. Mr. Rickett, Ms. Harrington?
I, I'm just gonna kind of ditto what Mr. Soon said. It is a big deal to put your name in the hat and step forward. And all of the candidates, I am greatly appreciative of them doing that. It takes real courage to do that. So I just wanted to comment on that. Whichever, whichever way the board goes, I am truly of the belief that the voters of District 4 are the ones that need to decide. They are the ones that need to decide. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Harrington?
I would also like to thank the applicants for taking the time, the effort, and the passion and the care for our community and our school and our students and our teachers and coming forward and putting your application in. This is a difficult process, especially since we are getting ready to go into an election shortly. But each of the candidates really demonstrated their strengths, and I appreciate that. And we will continue to have conversation and make a decision going forward, I believe.
And I can just say ditto. I'm very appreciative of the three who have stepped forward. I've enjoyed meeting you and talking to all of you and hearing your vision for Orange County, should you be the one to, to join us up here on the board. And we, we will do our due diligence. I can promise you that we are, we are working very hard to do what's right for the voters of District 4. And that decision will, will be brought out tomorrow at the 5:30 meeting. So at this point, we're ready to go into closed session, if there's nothing else? Yes, there's a close.
You ready?
Yep.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Virginia, of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for Appointment of Specific Public Officers.
All right. We are now in closed session.
I just need a second.
Oh.
Second.
Oops, I forgot that part. It's okay.
Details, details.
How are you?
Hi. Nice to see you.
Hi.
Alex.
Nice to meet you.
Open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered.
Thank you Ms. Harrington. Ms. Byram.
Second.
Forgot the second again.
I apologize. I was dazing.
Ms. A- uh, no, I don't have to call her name. Um, Mrs. Dawson.
Aye.
Ms. Harrington.
Aye.
Mr. Rickett.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows: three yes votes, no no votes and one member absent.
Thank you, and I think we have reached adjournment. Are you finished? All right. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.